We have on our little agendas, we'll call it order unofficially. No action will be taken. But we'd like to welcome all the councilmen, of course, our employees for our workshop. The first item on the agenda-
Can we do one thing-
Yes.
Somewhere on the agenda, and whether it's at the front or the back, just give each council member some time to talk about something they may have on their mind, rather than a preview to the meeting, or in addition to a preview.
I tell you what, let's do, let's start with the firm-
You want to start with that?
Yes.
I'd like to know about the downtown studies. Where are we on that? Has it been finished?
I think so. Pretty much it was a chambered issue, and they made that last presentation, and that was pretty much it.
Is anything going to be presented to council?
Didn't they not have presented to council?
I don't remember.
They did.
They didn't get-
That was, that was the presentation.
I've never seen the written report.
I think at the last Downtown Alliance meeting, or one of the last ones, Jerry had said something about coordinating with, and I don't remember the young lady's name. It was kind of over it. And I think he may have said something about doing another presentation for us.
I've not heard that.
Yeah.
Because when, when they came to us that night, that was the end of the, uh, that's it.
Well, they-
We, we, we-
We had questions at that night.
We have paid them, haven't we? They got their little last check.
Yeah.
I'd like to, I don't know that I need an oral presentation, that's a decision of all of us, I guess. But I'd like, I'd like to see a written copy of it, I'd like to see the written copy of-
I think the Downtown Alliance Committee has acted on some of their recommendations. For instance, the flowers was part of that. At least there are points, even though the trees are already started, or started about a second. The flowers is part of that. Some of this talk about the signage that we looked at in one meeting, the gateways and the billboards. There's not a lot of focus on it yet, but I still think that the committee's talking about that stuff, and trying to inch it forward. I don't know how that dovetails with what else.
My disappointment came in that it didn't do anything for the redirecting of traffic, which was the initial impetus of the council. And so they talked about signage and changing the vegetation, and, uh, but it didn't accomplish what- My motives were when I went to the-
Were there some options on there?
I didn't see many.
Is there a written report we can get?
I, I, I will- I will, I will talk up to Jerry tomorrow and see if we can't get there. All of, because Jerry was pretty much heading this up.
Okay.
There was a one-way and a two-way, and a, you know, there were several different-
I mean, they had a bunch of options on the drawings that we looked at. But I just-
We just didn't, we just didn't see a working plan.
No.
Nope, there was no work, there was not, it was not going to be a working plan. It was pretty much ideas, as it pretty much ended up being.
Did you find a copy of the written report?
Uh, look, I will get you a copy, if there's one available. Stay in my office for a long time, you see, it's all of them over there in the corner. Pretty much they've remembered that they had that now, they make the presentation to council.
Oh, speaking of, I see, is that Convent?
Mm-hmm.
Speaking of one-way streets.
Speaking of-
Yeah, speaking of, because that place said one-way or two-way. He said he had talked about reversing that street by-
I spoke with him.
What's the, which one?
No. We gotta get traffic out of town. We, uh, if we ever get the other one changed, it would be, uh, it would be two lanes going the same way, and plus a police cars goes that way, and you'd have everything flowing back into town. But we, part of my presentation tonight is street update. No, let's see, Dixie Street Extension, that's what I was going to talk about. But he just hit me with that when we were trying to talk about hitting with the gym, wanting the gym, and, "Oh, by the way, can we reverse the street?" He didn't remember-
What street?
Uh, Stegall.
Stegall.
He didn't remember, he didn't remember the hell, literally, the hell, when we got turned that way.
When was that?
Ninety-five, ninety-four, ninety-five?
Well, it came there, so I didn't ever remember. I remember-
It was mainly to keep the children from being run over when they were being dropped off, and that way all the kids get out on the driver's side, which I didn't, when he started talking about it, I thought, "It's not the issue, we get the children to get off, when they get out on that side instead of running around the cars." In the old days, and the real big reason it was changed then, I needed to run over Jerry, traveling, getting out of his dad's car, and me trying to go up the other direction when John Luke was in the first grade kindergarten.
You're not letting him, you should have just packed him up in one car.
I put him on school bus at that time, but, but that's when we did it, and that's when we ended up with a war with Albert Hammerick that year, and people who couldn't imagine having a one-way street in Jasper. But it has really done a lot to get to the chamber, to get to that end of town, and I couldn't see any reason. And still trying to figure out my cough, I want to change it. I think he just wanted to change it, see if it could be changed. And, uh, but I listened to it, and I thought, "It's got its issues now, but to change it coming from the chamber building going into downtown is the best way to get out of town, and then to get into town, because you've got two roads into town on the other side."
But one thing we can do to help on that Stegall, we need to put a no-left turn sign there. Because what happens is, you get one guy turning left, traffic back-
Where is that?
Up there at Stegall, right there in front of the old Jasper Jeep. It never fails, there'll be three cars lined up behind one car trying to turn left, and, and nobody's going to let nobody out.
So make them go all the way down to-
Well, just tell them that there's no left turn, that they're to turn right there on, um, uh-
You may not go back into town.
Yeah. Because I'm telling you, it, it will block, I mean, one car will block ten cars.
I, I didn't think-
You can't turn back.
You can't turn back.
You mean, going east on 53, you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about when you come down-
Give me that Whittfield.
Yeah, Whittfield Street, right there in front of the old Jasper Jeep.
Right.
There's a stop sign there. Nobody-
Okay, coming off of 53, block two.
Okay.
I'm just trying to make a right turn on, saying that for the former president. Not even go straight across right there, make a right turn on.
Yeah.
Because that's a, because because of the red light, you cannot get out of there.
You can't. And during, during, during festival, during when we close Main Street, we'll turn traffic that way to get one more block. Uh, years ago, my wife had a wreck there, and she called me and says, she's crying that she'd had a wreck, and I said, "Where were you?" And she said, "Well, I was trying to cross by the drugstore." And I said, "It was your fault." And she said, "No, it wasn't." And I said, "Yes, it was, you should know better and try to get out right there."
But there's people in the-
You, you've got no room, and what you, a car could drive that hill, they're on there.
Well, I mean, that's just something we need to look at, because I know in the morning it does make some-
Well, it's things we were talking about during the, I give all of you a ride, the way we should go, put you on the richer street, which will take you down, give you another block. Uh, and Lonnie's going to make a little presentation now, in a few minutes, that we got a little more update, that they may be starting the big project next year, or year after, nineteen, nineteen, I think that's nineteen.
I guess that was a surprise.
Yeah, it was to me, too. But they, they actually said this time, plan to start before it's projected. Uh, that's been since, that's been at least twenty-five years.
Been on a fast track.
They sound like me this morning, didn't they?
Where did they get all their money there, spending, clearing all these right-of-ways?
Well, that's, that's-
Call point of Savannah.
They're, they're looking, they're looking at more money than they've ever had in the, because of the gasoline tax years ago that we approved. Uh, and, uh, actually, state has money, according to them.
And we take the right-of-ways for years.
Find a guy with Savannah, man, they're clearing the whole meeting.
They're not taking-
I thought it was because maybe they were having so many beer accidents, and they were trying to take away the beer.
They were telling, they were telling, the bus owner scratched their truck, and they went through, and he didn't know it was going to look that bad, so I sent a crew over, trimming. You want to go look at them now? We, we're geeking in.
They look like a five-year-old did.
While we're doing the road search, anytime.
It's part of the report. We should have done this at the end, if we had mine out of the way, and y'all could have done it.
I didn't see a part of it.
We're bringing it on here.
Uh, Lonnie's going to be speaking, but I'm not going to hit him for that right there.
I do have, can we work on committee stuff here?
That would be my, that would be my suggestion, that we have some sort of organized schedule on committee.
Well, you guys, there's two of you that can meet, you look at two person on the committee, and so you can meet, kind of your place to meet, independent from the rest of the group, because you have a whole-
Report.
You'd be called a quorum.
See where we're at, and make that, that's our opinion.
Well, you could, you could do that here, but if you want to meet as a committee, you need to meet separate from the entire body.
I'll just go ahead and tell you, we might push the other committee because we wait, somebody feels a little bit better, so. Last time we seen you, you look pretty rough.
Who was it?
Bill. I'm worried about these. This will grow for a while.
Yeah.
Maybe we can just start it, and we can approve it.
Yeah.
Okay, you think else? Specifically, we can do this again at the end, give you more questions, but I think it's time we get into our little presentation, that way we won't have to look the same cast twice. All right, speaking of pre-committees, procommittee, pro-property committee. Uh, after I brought this up at the last meeting, I put some thought into it, and I thought that that would be a good time to discuss this, because I've done a very little contact, if any, contacts, Jim. What I'm going to do is assign you as Monday night head of the committee, and I'll let you choose your co-person to help you.
So you're going to be select the whole committee, or just-
I'm going to let you do the committee, but I'm going to give you one bit of advice. Too many cooks in the kitchen.
Oh, that's-
And, and when you concentrate calling out people all the night, I would give myself one more committee person, maybe one or two people from Main Street, and that would be the committee. Because if you get it, you ended up with an alliance, and you don't, you won't get anything accomplished. I feel like there's things that needs to be done with that property. You guys feel like there are things that need to be done with that property, and I want to voice my opinion when you decide what you want to do with that property.
Well, would you like, would you like to be on the committee? Or would you rather state your opinion later?
Uh, I'll state my opinion now, is to make sure you think of parking, uh, because a lot of that property was accumulated for, for parking, so, uh, but that's my biggest concern. But that was one of my, also, I thought of when we accumulated that property was, it could have been a very much a part of our intersection that would get traffic through town at the time. And so that's my biggest concern, and why we held it off for years, and just kept it maintained, and let it set up there foul. But that's all, one thing I want to bring to the table for you.
Does the big project cut through there?
At one time, we thought that we might need more room for an intersection at that part of town.
On East?
Possibly a roundabout could have been put there. Uh, but, uh, I believe the splits probably will take care of that, with traffic out of four-way stop. It depends what they, it'll be one-way in the future going through there.
Yeah.
But that's mine, but I'd, I'd rather y'all do it, I'd rather be-
I'm glad you-
I'd rather be the guys who get to sit back and ask the questions one time.
Uh, you know, I would like for you to participate in the committee, rather than find out opinions you may have.
Be adversarial. I just told you my positions on it, so.
I'll bet, I'll bet you got some more.
We, we spent a few years collecting that property, and, uh, and, but it was for the betterment of the city, at whatever venture or junction it happened, and it sounded like the junction is now. And, uh, but I would like to get the restrooms built in the near future, like we had planned, and move forward that, and we cut that off, which didn't bother me, because we had other projects going on this summer that we didn't have to commit.
No.
So how many spaces you say?
Seven, or they want to still open up?
Just off the cuff. How many spaces?
Spaces, I think that's- We could probably get a hundred if we were to commit the entire property, but I think that would be a possibly terrible waste of the property.
Obviously.
Uh, for that, but it would forever take care of the Main Street parking issues that we've had. But that's thing you'll find out during your meetings and-
Did we get an architect? Did we talk about that at one of the meetings, an architect for that property to move there?
We had, we had dinner with one one night, but we didn't hire anybody.
What we talked about, didn't we?
We, we have a concept drawing, but again, that's-
Y'all had a conversation, but there was nothing discussed in the council.
I will ask someone from the Arts Council to be there, I think.
I'd keep, I'd just keep it that you can control it.
And, uh, don't need permission to get Bill involved.
Uh, I would, I would ask him for his advice. But if you want me on the committee as well, but I'd rather let you chair this, and if I'm there, I'm going to try to chair it, so I'd rather, I'd rather not be there.
I never thought of that.
You don't want him there.
Bill misunderstood, Bill's position is pretty strong on the fact that it's ultimately, until the city owns it, who's going to make the decision.
Yes.
He misunderstood.
We got to have somebody from downtown, I don't want you there.
But he, he misunderstood, he didn't, Amelia, um, they weren't communicating. He thought Amelia was trying to sidestep him, and she wouldn't probably do that at all.
And there was some discussion on changing ownership of the property for their grant purposes, and that's going to be difficult.
Yeah.
And I think that's where Bill comes from.
I don't know, the council's interested in going out and transferring.
See, I, I'm feeling, I'm feeling mixed emotions in the council.
They don't own it, so we really can't.
We're guarantee, we're guaranteeing it.
We guarantee it, though.
And, uh, and the, but the Downtown Development Authority is the, by law, the actual owners of it. But they wouldn't buy it without us.
Because we can borrow money for a long term.
But Jim, anything you need on that, give me a call.
I will.
I'd contact anybody you want me to contact for you, if you can contact them.
After Monday night, I'll get working on it. It's not going to be an issue.
All right. Item B, is that okay with either way that did this, instead of trying to form you a committee, let you be in charge of it?
That's okay.
Item B, Wingsology Beer Truck. Let's talk about something that's important, so. Come right here, take some, Sonny, Sonny, sex.
Sit down and discuss.
I'm here representing Mr. Carlos Apicio, who belongs to Wingsology. He would like to get a special permit to have the Budweiser Beer Company bring a trailer up here with draft beer heads on it for the show and shine Jeep Fest-
Friday night.
Friday night. And, uh, so he asked me to come up here and present this to you. I didn't want you to hear about it.
In the paper?
In the paper. Spring it on you in the council. So, uh-
Yeah, let you see what we did.
You all can, you can know about it upfront.
Okay, let me, let me give you a little history, and Sonny's brought this to my attention. Mr. Howe, two years ago, and I, I'm going to have to say, I did not give permission, or executive permission, on getting the council to approve it, and I'm pleading the filth, I guess. I, I don't remember seeing it, or knowing anything about it. I just knew we had to move the van the second night in the middle, and somewhere, and I didn't go to that event, but there supposedly was a beer wagon there.
At the Jeep Fest?
At the Jeep Fest, at next to Wingsology. I can't, I don't have proof of that, but I don't remember seeing it, nor do anyone have ever told me about it. But when Sonny told me-
I would believe that.
There was a, the thing, the reason I remember something about it is-
And the reason I remember is-
Mr. Eugene Howe said that he was getting Budweiser to bring up, I forget how many kegs of beer. And I said, "Well, they won't do that." And he said, "Oh, yeah, they already promised to do that." And he told me later, they did bring them up, and had a refrigerated truck down there, they kept them in and everything.
I would give-
They were not serving out of it, though, because I can tell you the point, there was a line out of his building.
He couldn't get it served, I remember that, that's one reason we-
Well, see, he didn't, he didn't have the capability to serve draft beer.
Jimmy?
Yeah.
Nor did he have the capability to sell his bottled beer.
This is Wingsology?
No, I was in there, he did not have the capability.
Before he-
It was impossible to get a beer there.
That's, that's the truth.
I thought y'all never thought of that.
Didn't.
But that's why, that's why I kept thinking, I don't remember, because he, he, everybody was unhappy, because-
Well, I didn't attend that event.
You don't remember seeing it?
I'm, I'm just-
Oh, y'all must have been there drinking today.
I don't remember.
And you could not get a beer, you could not get it served. And I thought that was the reason he went out of business. Uh, because there's no service.
I think that was really cool.
The mayor can issue a special permit. And it is, according to the chief of poeways, it is not against any ordinances of the City of Jasper to walk around with an open container, as long as you're not a neighbor.
But we have it, you can't go out, you can't leave the confines of an establishment, walk out the door with a beer in your hand, or with alcohol, per our ordinance, alcohol ordinance.
See, what I'm remembering is, the arts group years ago wanted to have a beer, a wine problem.
Right, and we had, we had issues with it.
And we had issues with it. So when chief says, there's nothing says they can't carry it out, we-
State, state law, state law wise, no, but local ordinance. You've got to, you, you can't buy a drink at the establishment, walk outside with your hand. It's happened at New Year's Eve, it's, but, and if we, but we have not enforced and stood there and watched.
You can bring one from your car.
Yeah, you can walk around with Budweiser in your hand legally, but you better not trip with it in your hand, you're going to be manifested as drunk. You're, but, so that's why I would not walk around with one, just in case I were to do something that might be criminal.
But does it have to be in a cup? Because we've had this discussion a lot of times, and we've talked-
Well, this will be outside already, this will be outside his building, and that's why I couldn't imagine me approving that, or even giving permission.
They'd be putting it, we-
It's been going three years.
You all could require that they put it-
And I didn't do it, Johnny, I don't think.
A nondescript cup.
Right.
We have issued a license, so of course it's for a charity, but that-
So it's like all-you-can-drink, or what, what, I mean, is he going to sell it beer by beer?
We don't sell it beer by beer.
Beer by beer? Somebody serving it?
But what this can do, it can actually get more alcohol into human bodies faster, and my overpower ability of the police, it becomes, uh-
And also got to remember, you've got a major highway right there, there's a lot of traffic going up under, we don't need nobody to get down that hill.
Well, this is a, a good opportunity. Remember when we changed the ordinance, uh, about the ratio and stuff? The chamber's come up with a couple of times that they wanted people, either at Marble Festival, or some of the stuff down there in the park, be able to serve wine, or that kind of stuff. That's the same kind of thing that we're talking about, that they can do a special permit?
Well, they got to go up there and buy it at sixty-one Main, it's right there supposedly. It's what they've been doing supposedly.
Isn't that where we get a, uh, special, what do you, cater?
Caters have a license they can serve, you know, if they have a, a license, an alcohol license. We have, let's see, sixty-one Main is a, has a caterer's license, and they have an alcohol license, so they can-
They could actually come down there and cater you.
Right, they can serve alcohol because of the caterer's license.
But you just can't serve it down there, because there's too many restrictions on this legal product.
Now, there are some, there are some, it doesn't affect you all because of the ordinance, but the state has a special section here for wineries, and they have some different restrictions for them.
Well, the reason I'm asking that is, is the, well, again, the chamber had talked about, like, the Marble Festival last year, somebody wanted to come and do, like, a wine, you know.
Well, see, we have people that want to do Marble Festival, and for this Jeep Fest, we've had restaurants in, a restaurant here in town that wants to buy a one-day alcohol license. And I said, "Well, we don't have one of those." And she said, "Well, I want to get one, a special one." And I said, "Well, you don't have an alcohol license at your business, you don't serve alcohol at your business." And, uh, so you can't apply for these licenses, special licenses.
You can say that at forty-five hundred dollars, whatever, whatever it is.
But, uh-
But a beer truck, but we talked about that last time, like, the beer truck, or the brews and queues could bring, they have alcohol license already, and they could get a special permit either, then.
How much does a special permit cost?
And how much y'all want it to cost?
We don't, we don't actually have one, but a caterer-
Caterers, like, who's going, right?
Caterer's license is a hundred dollars.
Oh, I see.
Is how much?
Hundred dollars.
For one event?
Right.
Yeah, we made that very affordable.
They're not a hundred-dollar caterer permit for a year.
But they got to have it for that one event, though.
Right, then if they, if they pull that alcohol license, that, you all determine how much that alcohol special permit is.
Oh, we can set that special permit.
I would never show a special permit, yeah. They suck the caterer fees.
We do that with a long table, or table on banks there.
Aren't they catered? Don't they need to cater?
Well, they did in one time. We issued them a license every year, but we have issued them a license every year before. And the one time we did was when she was, they had over to-
Sixty-one Main did it the last time.
Right.
An airport outside the city.
Right, that's the one, we didn't issue that license.
So do we need to discuss what to charge on that?
Pardon?
Do we need to discuss what to-
The charges, the hundred dollars for the event.
I think we need to first discuss how, how do we approve or disapprove of the, them, the truck out there, or that.
We, uh-
Within our guidelines.
I say, well, I say, well, we're not going to give a permit for it, we'll let them figure out how they're going to get that there. So all we have to say is, no, and we're, of course, not doing it now anyway, but just going to think about it anyway between now and Monday to discuss it.
So they bring it up to the, to council, and we can notify them?
Yeah.
It doesn't have to go through, uh, well, there is no disapproving or anything on this?
Well, I'd like to be able to do this in advance. I'm not necessarily saying that the Jeep Fest is the one that, you know, two months that we do it, but I think in the future, we ought to at least look-
True, too, I think it's a great opportunity for the downtown, if they have a license already.
Ready to funnel?
You can.
No, you may feel differently. You probably don't.
I would like to be able to see us do things, uh, special events, Marble Festival, Jeep Fest, whatever it is, you know. Now, coming up with what we need to do and how we need to do it is, is going to be the important part.
Before I, before I vote for anything like that, I'd like to have some guidelines set up.
Right.
I don't want to vote for it, and then have established guidelines.
Yeah.
And getting it done by September, I'm going to say this.
Well, you have some guidelines in there as far as what you all want. You can waive a lot of the stuff that goes with an ordinary alcohol license, such as the fingerprinting and, uh, this-
Well, he already has a license, he does.
But he already has a license, but someone who is requesting a special license, which is above and beyond what he normally does, there, there's some things in there that you all can waive on that particular license, if you want to, for, this is for one day.
What would the liability be on this? I mean, since somebody goes out in a car wreck, do they-
Well, he's the license, he's the license holder.
Other places are doing it. Brews and Keys, how do they, or is that what they call it, Big Brew? How do they do it?
That's exactly how they do it.
Where's that in?
It's a, it's a kind of, I don't know if it's one organization or a bunch of organizations.
It's a, it's one guy that goes around to the-
He does festivals for towns and stuff, and, and pretty lucrative for the town, I think, or whoever's paying the event.
I can see it being something we want to be able to do at the, for, for a property.
Yeah.
Or foster something.
Is this a line?
What is that?
Of course it is a line.
We got plenty of park?
That's where we, at Med School, we even have these happy hours up on the top, down the park.
The lower park.
If it rain, we can move down there.
Okay, you got the information, put a lot of thought into it, and we'll give him some answer Monday. Thank you, Sonny.
How's he doing this? Are they, are they, seems like they're doing all right.
They, they're cooking along, they're, it needs to go up a little bit more. Yes, sir.
They're going to have your critiques. Okay, lift station pump, David Hall.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Yes.
It's on the roof.
It's your back.
Okay, I'm here to ask for one, Lonnie.
He's your wife.
Go from beer to pump, uh, lift station. How appropriate, don't you think?
Well, you gotta get it to the sewer plant somewhere. Yeah, gotta get it to you. Uh, yeah, David's here to explain Liberty Lane pump station issues.
Uh, years ago, uh, the city got sewer, or somehow got sewer from the racetrack, uh, to extend the city limits from the racetrack back up to town. So the problem was, once we got, uh, the approval to annex, you know, we didn't want to have sewer. So the mayor got in with a bunch of developers and they come in and put in five lift stations. A, which is by the racetrack. B, which is by the bridge at one oh eight at the creek. C, which is at the top of one oh eight at the intersection. D, which is across the road from, God's track, I'm not sure the name of the church. E is, uh, behind the rolling property up on Liberty Lane. For some reason, uh, our engineer, uh, engineer E to go into the pump station at Pickens County Middle School. Well, whenever this come time to do this, uh, Pickens County Middle School said, forget it, we're not gonna let you do it. So we had to take that then and just go into their forest lane and not go into their pump station and go on another mile, mile and a half to the wastewater plant. So by doing that, this has always put this pump station, uh, in a bind. And we've made it work for the past few years, uh, breaking shafts, shear pins. And it's just got to the point where we just can't do it anymore. So, uh, tonight, I'm bringing to y'all proposals from Flight, um, to, or is one of the people that is bidding it is the actual pump station that's there now, uh, is to, they're eighty-eight horsepower, seventeen seventy RPM right now. And they're wanting us to install or to purchase, uh, seventy-two horsepower motors at thirty-five hundred RPM. And I'm sure John's familiar with, it's just, they're more of a high head pump. And that's what we need at this location is high head pumps. And we can just replace one this year and put it on the budget next year to have the other one. But I'm afraid if we don't go ahead and at least do one of them now, we're gonna continue. Right now, they want twenty-seven thousand dollars to fix the one that's tore up. It broke the shaft completely into, so.
What is actually breaking the shaft? I mean, is this a volume?
It's the head. It's the actual head, the pump was actually designed to begin with, um, I'm sorry, John.
I just said it's a torque.
Yeah, it's, it's designed to do a hundred and eighty feet. And whenever we moved it, because the school wouldn't let us tie on to their station, you're looking at that two hundred and eighty feet. So you've got an extra hundred feet that you're having to push. So like John said, that extra torque, they just won't handle it. They'll handle it for a little while, sometimes they handle it longer, sometimes they don't.
Well, what, what, what is your outlook if, and I'll tell you, the building's back. If you're gonna see the volume going up, do we need to go up a size on the?
That's what they've done, that's what they've done.
No, I mean, the, is that, is that just to make it now or are we looking to the future?
Three hundred, right now, it's doing a hundred and eighty with the ones that are now. These will go to three twenty, three hundred and twenty gallons per minute. So, yeah, this is way into the future of what it would need for that location. Cause all of them, they pump to each other. So, you know, A pumps to B, B pumps to C and D, and so they're coming up. So this one's taking all of that, uh, Bethany Morris Racetrack, Sackets, everything goes.
Why does it not do this about the most of them?
I agree, I agree, yeah. And this is looking toward the future. And if we can get one of them this year, along with, uh, our engineer and Flight, our recommendation, let's go with a heavier duty, uh, check valve, check valves at this station also. So I've got two things that, um, I'll be bringing to y'all, the purchase of a pump, which we'll, we'll have four bids on this pump. We'll have a Flight, Amtech, James Electric and Parole pumps. So you'll have four bids on this pump. They might not be the exact pump, but they will do the exact of what we asked from two hundred and eighty feet ahead at three hundred gallons per minute was what we, we've got the bids from everybody, everybody knows, it's a same ball game now. Flight's way of getting there may be different than Amtech, but we don't really care as long as it will hook up to our brackets.
You're doing specifications.
Yes.
They got to be inspection with whatever means and ways and means they have, understand that. But was there ever any discussion about an additional lift station or pump station?
Uh, possibly if, you know, if for some reason this one were not working, which I, I see no reason. We've got these high head pumps all over town. So I see no reason that this pump station should be. Yeah, at, at the time, we were, uh, mayor was trapped, the city was trapped. I mean, they, we had already spent, what, two million dollars just in materials trying to get sewer from the racetrack back up to here and city, you know, already annexed the land. And I re, we actually had, uh, pumper trucks pumping the sewer out, cause there was people already tied to the sewer. Uh, I don't know if you remember that.
Sackets Racetrack?
Yeah, they were already having, pumper trucks, we were having to pay pumper trucks to pump the sewer out because they had already been guaranteed that the sewer would be there. And there were so many, you know, land acquisitions and everything else.
You think this, this pump is a better solution than the second station? And this, where I was going from, it's, it's in look there.
Yes. Yeah, and, uh, engineer, term seed, Chuck Butterfield, I've talked to him on the phone about it and he's in agreement. He says he sees, uh, no reason why not to just go back with Flight unless it's just a crazy number that somebody else is under because the whole station is flat. The panel box is, soft starts, everything's already flat and a flat station, so. And we've had those checked out, we've had soft starts checked out, we've had a panel box checked out. Uh, run graphs on the pressure leaving the station and sent all that information to them and.
David, they're still gonna get some numbers for you before Monday night, but we're looking at under forty total package. We can't give you a number now because we're still waiting. Like, as long as they, whoever listens to me knows they can work with forty, but, uh, best to give you an idea of what we're looking at. And that's with just the one pump.
Yes.
Uh, but we've got some bids below that, so. I think anybody who's come at us for less than that, I don't think that's rigging, especially as we're open public, but give you some idea of what we're dealing with.
And David, and are we trying to get all our pumps, you know, for the same kind?
Yes, the same kind and.
That way we can reuse parts and all. I mean, I'd rather find a trusted brand, I don't care if they pay a little bit more, a little bit less. If we can keep stuff and interchange them, I think that's the best way.
Yeah, and, and we're soft starting and VFD and, uh, we're doing them at the Wales. We're gonna do VFDs over there. And then we'll be able to take one of those soft starts from over there and bring it down to the raw water pump station. And the VFD of the water plant is working great.
Just start moving back and forth, sure, dirty waters.
Oh, no.
Not the pumps, no.
Anything else, guys? Thank you, David. All right, Mr. Waters. Anything dealing with bids, roads or otherwise?
Okay. I've got a list of items here that, uh, uh, we've been researching the streets behind the tech school in that area. I know the next bid package that'll be going out very soon, Rebecca Street, between Frontier and Indian Forest, is gonna have to have some maintenance done to it. The, evidently the ground's sinking and asphalt's splitting and that's going to be dug out. So we could possibly have to close that road for a couple of days.
And we may do that as early as next week.
So that we can get it out and it be done by the time the bid comes through.
We're gonna dig out, look like an old trash pile, fill it with bays and we'll put a thin layer of asphalt on it, wait until it, go be able to do that ourselves and they'll come in, pay later.
Okay, and then the striping of different areas, uh, the duck pond, the parking lots has all been, um, resurfaced. And, uh, I have tried to find someone that will stripe parking lots. Uh, the company that does our streets don't do that. I've had some recommendations, I have contacted a couple of people. The Browns Asphalt Markings in Athens, they come to Canton, they come to Cummings, so they know the area. And they have actually sent me back a bid, um, it comes.
Don't mention it tonight.
Well, I say a bid, it's a quote is what it is. Uh, because we hadn't opened nothing up for bids, it's just a quote.
It's not the way you had, it's a whole, I'll tell you this, we had somebody resurfacing across the road, uh, uh, putting on a seal and strapping in the next few weeks. And I don't know who it is, it's, it's a subcontractor doing a fast work order. Uh, but once they get over there, I'll get you a name.
Okay, that'd be great.
May be able to tie on, but.
I also was out there a couple of years ago.
Could you get that to Monday? No, I can't, cause I, I don't think they even know. Maybe the same people would get it.
Maybe.
But I, I will, I, I, if I can get it Monday, I will. Put it down.
Okay, all right.
You'll get the price, it's not, we could actually almost do it, uh, with, within my Monday terms.
Yes.
But, like y'all approve.
But that's, uh, what we're going on the striping. It does include, uh, adding the T parking places on Mary Street, uh, putting them to back because there was parking areas on the street there. Uh, it, uh, it does not include, uh, the mayor and I discussed this afternoon. Uh, Richard Street is a very wide street behind.
I looked at that, I know, I don't think we need to, they already got it striped and it'd be off.
Okay, all right.
We're talking about adding parking spaces there, people need to park there, there's still be room to go through for a festival or a downtown event. You can park on the white line, I think we can get by with it. We'd have to race out and make the, make it look bad.
Okay. Uh, this is, includes, uh, putting the crosswalk behind Jasper, you and I met this church. They're real concerned about the kids going across and playing on that field. There's no crosswalk right there because the research and done away with that, so this, uh, we.
They didn't step back, did they, when they?
No, they didn't.
Forgot that.
You know, the prices include different things like, uh, if we choose, if the city chooses to, uh, do the crosswalks here at Bird Mountain, where the tagging and asphalt has blacked out some of the crosswalks that the state did and everything, resurfaced that. But, uh, that's the, the things about the striping. We have, we did open bids for the Wood Bridge. Uh, we set out two bid packages. We got one returned and the amount of it was forty-four thousand dollars. And that fixes the repairs or replaces the abutment timber and repairs everything that they said that we would end up repairing in the future, so, um.
Is that keeping, what is it, four tons? Is that keeping it at four or?
The DOT will, uh, I think they will actually raise the weight because they are doing away with the smaller amounts. But this should, the DOT hasn't said, but this should meet their standards.
It probably needs to kept around four ton to keep the large trucks off of. They need to go around, if they need to serve, uh, Woodbridge, they can come around easily.
And the DOT even indicated maybe we put on a sign on each end, no, no truck traffic or something. And, uh, consider that.
It's a nineteen twelve Woodbridge.
Yeah.
Don't see why we'd want.
Hundred and eight year old?
Right.
Hundred and seven year old?
Okay. I understand there's work in, on a concrete, uh, pier on, on the Woodbridge side, is that right? Did we talk about that the other night? Abutment or?
We changed, we wanted to leave it, they want a, a, a chisso abutment back.
They're gonna fix it back.
Are, are we doing anything?
Yes, rim wrapping underneath, we're talking about this, we talked about.
To, to keep this happening another eight years, are we getting a more permanent fix this time?
This wood. No, this wood is chisso, it's gonna eventually wear out, this, this is rotten.
So if we went with the concrete, uh, abutment, is that giving us?
That's gonna, that's gonna outlive us. It'll take us probably twenty-five, thirty, forty years.
But now this company.
What, we're doing that for twenty-five?
Uh, that, the, the new, those new timbers, he's, we probably, might have some other timbers give us issues in the future because we're not replacing the old bridge. But this is gonna get in good shape enough to, uh, let the DOT approve the weight.
Well, I'm thinking about avoiding doing this again in eight years.
But, but you're, you're, you're also stuck replacing with concrete pretty soon. This, this timber will, land, concrete goes away as weight. Uh, take, take, take the monument at the Woodbridge, I mean, at, at the Woodbridge. It was on the mountain nineteen thirty-one, it fell apart by nineteen ninety-five, uh, because it was concrete inside, so.
Yeah, but we're getting eight years out of, out of the wood and not, uh.
We're gonna get longer than eight, we're gonna get, we're gonna get longer than eight years out of this wood. Well, a lot of these, well, a lot of these woods, a lot of these timbers in this is nineteen twelve. It's been there a long time, so.
The new timbers will last longer, yes.
Yeah, we, we won't have any problems with this in our lifetime.
We may have some problems, but it will, it will be the old timbers that's there that we're not replacing. The new timbers will last.
Well, so what's to say?
This, this timber probably.
Have another forty-four thousand to replace.
This timber we're replacing, I'm gonna say is a nineteen twelve vintage. Uh, over a hundred year old.
I just. If, if we had concrete abutments, to me, that.
It lasted longer than the monument. Concrete will fall apart, especially in this, in this area. It'll just deteriorate. The monument now, Oglethorpe Monument now has a solid marble core. It, you, there's no concrete bottom except for what it's sitting on, which is seven or eight feet down.
Unfortunately, they also have epoxy on that bridge, which ages a little differently.
Yeah, but he, we, we kinda shot that a little bit, but still, it looked better than it did when it came up the mountain.
No, no, those are your bullet marks, Charlie.
No, no, I never shot that.
Last week. But, but that's, uh, I truly believe this will be a couple of generations from now trying to replace these.
Yeah, but I was asking him, if we put forty-four thousand dollars, what's to say next year we don't have another forty-four thousand dollars on the old timber that?
What's to, what's to say? And is the bridge worth saving, I think is the question you're asking. You know, the front of there, you know, the front of there, the present issue?
Is it, is it worth the taxes?
Absolutely, the Woodbridge is a mainstay in the city of Jasper. And I'll look square in that mon, in that camera there, let the public know that. I'm not trying to sound overly political, but I've had my rear end chewed out more than once over that bridge. And I have finally become a believer that that bridge needs to be saved. If we put it for walking across, within five, ten years, it'll be dilapidated. You can't just let something sit there and not repair it. And if we were walking across it, finally we'd be hanging on one side. We gotta keep it ready for vehicles and automobiles would be the vehicle. But that Woodbridge is, if anybody's got a streetscape or a skyscape, that Woodbridge, if you want to maintain the integrity of downtown, the Woodbridge is a main part of it.
Okay, so let me ask you this, so would it fall, fall under the piece block?
Uh, yes, we're gonna pay for it with blood money, it's transportation. Now, I might argue with you guys, but fill it up straight out of the budget, but that's what this is for.
Well, same, we'll, we'll let it come out of the piece blocks for sure.
Yes. Unless Lars Whitfield was alive, would I have more of an advocate for that bridge than myself? Cause he was the one that pretty much insisted that we repair it.
I, I.
And you were like.
Yeah, and I, I don't question we need to, if we can, to keep the Woodbridge. I have as much love for it as, as anyone. But, uh, by the same token, I wanna make sure we're getting the best out of the forty-four thousand dollars. And if there's something we need to be doing to get more value out of it, another five thousand dollars, a lot easier to spend now than, uh, ten years from now. We, we have to tear up something to put that, a button, concrete button there.
I wanted, I wanted more replacement, I think, when we were talking about. I, I was looking probably around sixty-five to eighty thousand dollars and then was shocked when they came in. I didn't want them to bear bone them. I wanted it to be, uh, good for years to come and not have a, an expenditure five or ten year down there. But I can't tell you we're not, because these timbers are, some of them are frail.
But they knew you wanted that, right? When you, I mean, they knew you didn't want to bear bone it, you wanted it.
Yes, that was made very clear.
Yeah, I, and I was shocked when it came in because, uh, when I gave them pretty much to go ahead and repair it. We gave a lot of the authority to tell this group, but it was, we told the other group.
Right.
So, but anyway, I was pleased with forty-four thousand.
So you think if we take this up of our piece blocks, we'll have enough to finish our roads and repair the bridge?
It's gonna impact us a little bit, but, uh, I think we'll be able to handle it this year. Uh, we may, may have to drop the street off, will depend on what, what we.
Completely off, we'll catch it next year.
We'll catch it next year, but it might not happen this year. But we're going, we're getting so close, we got more roads to pay for a captain, anybody that says.
Dublin Mary Street, everybody's happy. And, and on the paving that's been done, just the improvement coming off of Holly onto Spring Street, that mess that we've had for years, big improvement.
Now, Campus Drive. We, I've, I've told everybody who lived over there, we can go think about that for years. You know, these guys come in and, and it did not do away with the, with the, with the wash or the ability to drain. And it's pleasant turning off on the Campus Drive now versus back in the day, you would nearly drag, uh, a four wheeler, so. It, uh, they, this Johnson crew, all, I agree that all did well, but. It, uh, they, this Johnson crew, all, I agree that all did well, but, uh, this Johnson crew is amazing to work with. They're, they're accommodating, uh, for lack of a better term, not, not to the northwest Georgia, whomever. And C. Lewis Matthews wouldn't be, but they, they do an excellent job working with us.
Yeah, I, I think we've, we've done some good work there.
Thank, thank you, Lonnie. Anything else you wanna add?
Well, you can tell me in touch on these other things. On the next page, you'll see a list. That's all the streets that we were wanting to get resurfaced this year. You can see out to the side, the ones that's been completed, the ones that's going to be on the next contract. And the ones that our Amig money is going to pay. Uh, these streets, uh, the ones that's not been resurfaced, we're hoping to get all of these completed in the next bid package. And then we will start looking at the next Springs, uh, packages, so.
So you mentioned a while ago, uh, I think the word is wayfinding, uh, that the chamber uses signage.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, a little known fact is by this time next year, we've gotta be well into rebuilding, redoing our signs around town. The county is well into it. And so we're gonna be coming to you pretty soon with, uh, probably gonna put it into the street department, uh, sign making capabilities as well as a person that would make these signs. We're not about to make anywhere near as many as the county. And I can't even ask the county because they're probably not gonna get done by next year countywide. So with that, we will be able to, we will have the ability in the future to build our own signs.
And can we do the nine one one addresses on those signs?
We can be able to do all those things again because whether they come off, we'll be able to put it back. We'll have the signing, making capability. We're gonna do that.
I didn't know if we could do it on top or if we could do it on the sign itself.
Is the county doing the, uh, making theirs or?
They, they, they got, they got into it before we have. And what it is, is federal law, they wanted to make street signs that people who are handicapped with vision, which I've always felt if you couldn't see a sign, you didn't even be driving. But, uh, that being said, uh, but it is often nice to be able to look up and see a huge sign. And you, I think it's over forty miles, forty-five miles per hour. I may be wrong with the, so some of these smaller streets back, we won't have to change. Do you think facing fifty-three and those areas, we will have to address? But if we get into it, we might as well be able to do our own directions. Haven't got a county yet. That's something we'll be working.
We just can't hang on with the county and do it?
I, I was going to try and do that, but I, but they, but they're not giving me much response. I talked to Robert. Didn't seem much response to it. Because they're gonna not, probably gonna be able to get done with what they've got to do.
I do know that Jerry has worked with, uh, Rob on, and there's been some design work, uh, you know, just kind of looking at some of the stuff that we may be interested in doing. It's a shame not to duplicate it. Not doing that, doing.
We, we can order them, but they're very expensive.
I didn't know when you were.
They have like. I, 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 you know, Mr. Jones, mother of Lois, does it right. And I actually asked him, I talked to him, I said, I might need to get you heavy this signs and his, kind of signs rolled back a little bit because they've got a lot of stuff.
I don't know. I think it's. I think we're behind on that.
And it's, it's, once you get, it, it, actually, this blanks and all this is where the big expense comes from anyway. The sign, once you get into sign equipment, I don't think that's that expensive. It's killing them.
Speaking of lines, what do we learn about the traffic signals up townwide, anything?
But, uh, I've, I've completed all the city's, uh, obligations. Uh, the car's office has all of our plans and everything. And, you know, we're waiting on them to start moving in and do, do something with it.
What about with the monument, anything on that?
We're, we're leaving everything like, like it is and they're gonna do everything possible, not too messy, anything that.
Here we'll start it.
We don't know. Oh, you mean overall. The, the four lane, uh, the meeting that I went to in Carthful the other day. Uh, they gave me a printout of, well, they gave everybody a printout of every project they've got in the counties that Carthful covers. And in the city of Jasper, it says that in August, uh, two thousand and eighteen, they will start moving with all the, uh, I guess the right of ways and things. Uh, they are, they did make the comment that anywhere that they were doing this road work, they wanted the utilities moved. They did not wanna put these roads over the utilities. That would be at the city's expense unless there is some grants that we could apply for. So that's something that I'm trying to find out now, uh, which grants is gonna be able, if they move forward to this. But then in January of two thousand and nineteen is when they say the work will actually start. But the paperwork and all the, uh, right of ways and everything will start in August of next year.
Did you tell them that we repaired the water, land break?
Yes, I did. They were very appreciative. Very appreciative. Yeah, so that's, we didn't have to cut the road. So that worked out. The only other thing that we've got going that I do have to file paperwork on with DOT is the bridge up here at one thirty-six off of Bird Mountain. We have a water line that goes to that intersection. The county ties on to it there. David, there's a meter there, isn't there?
Yes.
They have asked us to give an estimate of what it would cost to relocate that line either, uh, to the left or to the right or shorten it. If they end up making that intersection larger, uh, because of the new bridge. So, uh, I'm in the process. I'll be getting in touch with David and some of them and try to come up with some prices.
Is that gonna be a problem? We're off in, uh, Collins and Pasture, pretty close to the road.
But according, according to their drawings of what they're gonna do, it is, uh, it could be in their way. They're not saying it is, but they wanna know what it might cost to move that or relocate it, so.
What are they talking about?
That, that's gonna happen pretty quick. I mean, the bridge is in bad shape.
And we'd like for us to move that. We're just turning right there. I mean, the county's gonna have a bigger problem. We are today.
Well, they're gonna buy water from L.J. anyway, so.
But, but they're gonna have, but they tied to this. They, they have more line exposed to this project than we do.
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you, Lonnie.
They're on their way to L.J. anyway, John Smith.
Um, Dixie Street Extension, mentioned to you earlier in meeting with Mr. Wilson and the one not only wanting to change Stegall in a different direction. Uh, he actually offered to me, uh, I believe, uh, offered to me before I even asked. And it's dealing with, with the gym. They wanted their gym back. And, uh, he wants to give us a road back that Mr. Kimsey Wood, when he was school superintendent, came in and asked for Dixie Street Extension, uh, so that the children could walk to the gym. But now the gym is gonna be used for, uh, technology, but mainly storage. And so they don't really have to keep that safe and they'll block it off, but we get to uncover our existing road that is underneath their landscaping. And I believe I understood Mr. Wilson to tell me that the board had already approved that offer back to the city. So I'll make sure I have it somewhat legalized for Monday night. We'll put Lonnie on trying to get some documentation that the council can vote to accept that if you choose. And it seems like since we covered that road up years ago, it's kind of hard to get around town if you come in that direction. So hopefully the council will consider taking our road back.
What is the benefit of telling me what?
Benefit would be that we would be able to access a different route to get to town.
And come off the DB, DB Carol onto, uh.
Dixie and Stegall. It really, it really happened. We did that back in the days, but it did, when you had children, it was hard telling you, you couldn't. And the council gave them that, uh, that road.
How did they want more traffic around the school? It's something to do with this bus route.
The buses or something?
I have a committee with the Chamber of Education, workforce development, and Carlton was there this morning, but it had something to do with the way you want surround the bus traffic. And I, I.
The buses can line up, they can go all the way around like they did originally, and it's just so much better than it being. Uh, and when Mr. Wood did that, uh, he used to kid me that he couldn't get to the elementary school without going all the way around, coming back to town and go across the hall. So this, this would allow that access. And they'll, they'll have buffers to keep vehicles from going that way. But the buses used to line up that way and, and, uh, I'd kinda like to have our infrastructure back because they've offered it.
This is kind of off, off topic, but, but it kind of made me think about it. Have you been trying to do some, a park or something over by the old scout hut? And, and you ended up getting met up with some resistance?
We did some work over there years ago and we decided most of that's way to land.
I was thinking that recently you tried to do it and the owner or somebody pushed back on you. And the only reason I say is that that scout leadership has kind of changed some things. And if you were still interested in doing that, it might be something you could approach along.
We, we at one time looked at bringing cart traffic out of Piney Woods into behind the Boy Scout hut and bringing it to Burke Street, cross there and go up. But we kind of gave up on that because we didn't have the funding ability. But once we get through all of our paving, we're gonna try to use some of our, uh, splosh money for, uh.
Well, that scout troop is now, the Methodist, uh, the Methodist troop has now kind of taken that troop over in their meeting, I think in the hut again. And so it's, uh.
That property was owned by Martha and Mary, uh, White.
Yeah.
Now Polly and Trent. And, uh, I think they donated that land for the Boy Scout hut. And they on another piece of property kind of blocked city property from, uh, and I never negotiated with them for that landlocked property they have. But we went in there and did some work and we will, but it's, it's, we have to really be careful because a lot of drainage goes in that area.
Had it looking pretty good.
Yeah.
Cleaned up looking real good.
It, uh, we'd like to do it again, but it's just be a heck of a hassle, re-mow it. But we could probably use certain equipment to mow that, uh, without losing it, hopefully.
I'd like to see it used.
Whatever. I said everything. I said everything. Why didn't you hit another park? Okay. Uh, but anyway, that, that will be on your agenda Monday after Dixie Street, yes, ma'am?
Speaking of the park, I was just thinking, we talked about working on those walking paths. Are we still?
Paying them?
Yeah, paying them.
We paved, uh, Lonnie told you earlier.
We paved over to Doug Park.
Paid the Doug line. And, but not over leaning yet, but we're going to. We probably will pave that ourselves.
So did we go over up and around like we used to, all the way around the upper field?
No, we just paved down the bottom where we were working and the parking lot up the other. We'll probably add that to another project. We took what little we had left over from another street to do what we did there. We was not enough into our funding in the project, if I remember. But we, we, we still didn't, if you go look at it, you come off of the ball fields, come down, you turn and go back out by the bridge and come out. We were going to open it up and let vehicle, vehicular traffic go around again, but there was no way to make that field safe. And looking back on it, back in the days when they did that, it was not necessarily that safe. Vehicle traffic was really close to the bridge. And, uh, and also going over the waterfall area is too high. So we're going to go in and vegetate behind the waterfall and we left that not paved. That's why we did that. We just, it's just gonna be probably a winter project.
Drive through the park now?
No.
No, no, it just goes too high. We're gonna, we got it blocked off with.
I thought you brought it around the other.
We were going to, but it wasn't safe. We, the cars are too high above and any mishap would have brought a car right into.
I, I know we were talking.
But I would love to, but it was just, I couldn't, I just did not get, we tried. We even graded it down and looked at it and just gave up. And then we brought the, rerouted the trail from upstairs up, up on top, down to a turn that takes you parallel with the bridge and brings you back out where the old road used to be at the tennis court side. You can see it if you go look at it. It works pretty well and, and don't get the slopes are not so, so a handicap person would have a difficult time with it. So we got it very gradual.
We closed those, uh.
Pardon?
The parks.
We got a signage up, police patrol a week, do it time to time. You're talking about any issues you've had lately, maybe from phone calls. Uh, we're probably gonna capture somebody pretty soon. If that's what you wanna hear. Or you wanna ask any questions specifically?
No, I may not just like for, we've put the money into it to, to repair and do all the improvements. I want the kids to have a go over there without seeing some of the stuff their city. I mean, you got people parking over there in the evening, night, because it's dark. That's why I said that. I know we really don't have a way to close it right now, but I think that's something to look at in the future.
I think they should stay home. Stop doing those type of things.
I would say that.
Okay, give me a call on that issue if you would. I'll see what I can say about it. Put your mind at ease. Uh, water source update. Uh, I've had an opportunity with Mr. Hall and, uh, Mr. Turnseed to go to Whitemore. Uh, we weren't overpowered with seeing water flow, but, uh, David did see some, about two hundred, three hundred gallon a minute going into the creek and they weren't pumping. And, and Mr. Turnseed asked for the charts and data that they've been pumping for years. And I spoke with Mr. Turnseed this morning with John Klein in my office. And, uh, when Ben gets back Monday from his trip, he was, he's gonna contact Mr. John Long and encourage him to get the data they had to have. And Mr. Klein was telling Mr. Turnseed this morning that the amount of water that he gonna find that they pump is, is skimming the top of what's there because all they're trying to do is keep, keep it so they can mine. But, uh, Mr. Klein also mentioned to Mr. Turnseed this morning in our meeting that, uh, there were other sources a little further into hostile territory. That being Gilbert County, uh, that might find an aquifer that we could tap into and, uh, be successful at. So we might end up drilling a well before it's over, uh, in, in that area. I feel like the mines that they have there, if we tapped into them like we did in Cove, we would have millions, maybe billions gallons of, or billions gallons of water. Uh, with the amount of stories that they have. But it's gonna be an expensive process, a long process. Getting permission, right of ways, easements, contracts, whatever we gotta have in order to pull that off. But first one is to prove that the water is there. And I believe we'll be able to do that. David, anything to add to this?
No, yeah, I think there's water there. I mean, the guy that we talked with, he was estimating eight hundred to nine hundred thousand gallons a day that they were pumping out now. So even that is a very substantial underwater.
We could use it.
Oh, yes.
And Mr. Klein and I, when we left this mo, when he was getting ready to leave, he and I ran up to Grandview Lake. I wanted to see that. And Grandview has, has grown up around the shoreline all the way around. It's, looks like it's been abandoned. Uh, I have not had an update from Grandview. Has anybody talked, talked to you lately about this? I don't know what they intended. The Grandview Lake.
I haven't asked anybody and they haven't told me.
Grandview Lake would still be, I think the city of Jasper and Grandview Lake would be a great partnership. Uh.
Be nice to have it one.
Actually, I'd like to give them some. I'd like to give them some. If we had water at Whitemore, that would be a great place to store it. And I always make sure the lake is full. And I like to go up there and talk to somebody from Grandview and say, let us fill up your lake. Let us repair that dam for you. But evidently they like the kudzu and the grass going around the edge of it. I know it's been over five years that the lake has been below where it's at now, so. And I know sooner or later, the Corps or whomever is in charge of the Safe Dam Act is going to respond to that not being repaired. Uh, and it'd be a shame if they were to do away with Grandview Lake. And no one's gonna take liability for that from the bureaucratic side, I believe, so. Anyway, that might be a message that somebody might give us a call. Just in case the right person sees this. But, uh, Twin Mountain Lake, I think, has potential as well. They have dam issues as well. And I know I'm a property owner on that lake and I know we don't have the money to repair a dam. And all the dams around this country are fifty, at least fifty years old, maybe a hundred in some cases. And there's, there's, they've gotta be repaired or done away with because of safety issues. And one of these days, now if you remember, nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-six, seventy-six, seventy-seven, the, the Koa River or dam broke and killed all those people.
Ground those people.
And so if that happens again anywhere in this country, the Corps of Engineers, everyone. And so if that happens again anywhere in this country, the Corps of Engineers, everyone responsible for the Safe Dam Act is going to start breaching these old dams, and they'll just be done away with.
I'll find out the gibbetree that was on the dam disappeared after that.
Yeah, so then, 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 you can't stop the water if it starts, so. That being said, I have, give me one second, take a break, I hope you, just one second. Do you have my second call?
I brought the email.
That's what I wanted to-
I brought the top emails close recently.
Council, I received an email from Mr. Paul Corr with the Jasper Merchant Association. He wanted to dovetail with the, actually didn't, I think near the car show that we have, the Cruze Inn. It was gonna happen on the October 28th, which is the last Cruze Inn of the year. And I believe his contact with the Cruze Inn people didn't bear any fruit. So he, uh, changed the date to November the 4th. And I don't have copyright on this. It's, it's, it's what, basically, I keep on giving Council that and not getting into too much, but he wants to have a mania, Jasper mania, which I don't know where that name came from, uh, November the 8th, and it talks about car, National Car Club with over 70, maybe 150 different cars. Uh, wants to have all these people do all these things on two different days. He wants to only close this main street, I think the full main street from one end to the other, from four o'clock till eight o'clock. And I thought with all this offering, that maybe the council would want to hear about it Monday and, and see if, and I, so I called Paul. I said, Paul, gather all your information, be able to prove to the council that you have this many people coming to town, uh, so that we can move forward with this. So I gave him one place, I'm a slot on the agenda for Monday night to make a presentation, if the council is impressed with the offering. Yeah, she gonna give you copy if you read it yourself. And take this with, take this as well, please, and give a copy of the flyer. You can make your decisions. I didn't feel good about just making the executive decision to shut the street down for what might or might not be. He carried the flag of the downtown, uh, merchant association, uh, so maybe we'll hear more and get more responses. And I, I think Paul is still the chairman of the merchant association.
I think he's not, but he's carrying the boat.
Okay, so, but it takes a lot of effort to put that on, and I'm not sure, I like, I like to ask him who's gonna help him accomplish this task. Because it takes a lot of personnel. I know the city will have to offer police protection or control and, and also they probably want to borrow our state, so we'll have to stop, do all that and get it up, get it out of town, so. Uh, it's, you know, we stopped doing that a few years ago because it was more expensive than it was providing revenue, so. I know there are certain people who love main street manias and whatever, so we'll let you have, we'll put you on that group.
And his other event, Paul's Online or whatever it is, has anybody ever attended that? That he does, some thing with dog, dog lovers and stuff. And I've never been.
I've not.
He builds it up a lot.
I have heard of it, but never been.
I bet you'll agree about, but that'll be before you Monday night, and, um, and I would hear more anyway. The council needs to hear it so that we can move forward with it pretty soon.
Is that something that could go onto, uh, the hospital, uh, road property?
It'd be a lot better situation just in case it don't, uh, make that big, but, uh, there's plenty of places to park cars. But we're talking about November, November's getting to be the end of the summer, and most people with old cars don't like to get them out in the cold weather or in the rain, and November 4th is usually-
Cold.
Cold and cloudy, so, but anyway, I want to give it the opportunity.
Can I have the street over there where the, uh, where the Board of Education is? Is that, are we ever trying to have a function in just that little area?
You used to have Marble Festival.
The original Marble Festival was there. It's not a bad location, and especially with the road cloak, it means you can actually go down through there, but, uh, that would be a neat idea. Might be, might be something Paul Monday. Uh, just in case you don't get 70 cars, you don't have to stop the whole City of Jasper from functioning, and there's a lot of space there. You don't have a lot of residents, but these people could walk through the restaurants from those locations.
Not, not a big walk.
And I'm sure we can get the school to work with us on that little area, not suspected since, since the street. Anyway, uh, she'll gather that information for you, and any other questions before we adjourn, that's pretty much, uh, no big expenditure except for David Hall.
He was in a bunch of talk times.
Oh, I just skipped that. Uh, Goff, well, let me let Lisa get back, because she got my numbers. Wait a minute, Lon.
Camera man, Lonnie, look at there.
Lisa, you walked out, and I, I was trying to get out without age, and John mentioned it to me. Uh, and we can also talk about the gym a little bit, Lonnie.
That's right.
John, I wanna ask you something.
There's a gym, huh?
The numbers for the, that you gave me this morning for the golf tournament, could you help us with those, please?
Yeah, I've got it written down. Close to $9,000 we've needed.
That's awesome.
Oh, you're talking about tired, I'm getting old. I had the, I had the future Lieutenant Governor Rick Jeffers with me on that hoe. I don't know if you had an opportunity to meet Rick yet, he's worked for Ben Turnseed, he's a state senator from Locust Grove. And, uh- Pardon?
That's kind of an interesting relationship, that he worked for Turnseed and his-
Well, he'd also been city manager, he'd been, uh, worked for Locust Grove and, and a couple of the counties. He also owns, uh, some, uh, private water facilities. And, uh, but he's a state senator, and I believe they'll choose the new lieutenant governor from the state senate. And he and one more senator, I believe, would want to be vying for that position. I'm looking forward, if, if he were to get elected, we're pretty good. I'm gonna, I promised him I'd help him any way I could, and I'm not running for, not endorsing him.
Other guys from Cornell County.
Yes, yes, yes. What's his name? No, don't worry about saying his.
You're working on this, uh, personnel policy still. Do you have something on safety? You brought that up to us, I mean-
Safety?
Yeah, meetings, uh, or-
In, in, in our, in our, uh, policies?
Policies.
Well, what we do is, I have not had one lately, I used to have it when it rained mainly, but now we're trying, trying to play catch up is have, uh, safety, John provided, if place department before.
We had 24 when it rained.
Right on.
Just waiting for that, couple of weeks there, going over down the public, you see, see, got the pipe, uh, demonstration. And George Powers wanna have their virtual demonstration over for all the EMS, the EMTs, the firemen, the police. Basically what to do when you come up on a wire.
Work is gonna be?
Over at, uh, Colville, or wherever. Should watch your email, Don's gonna send the email out.
That's, that building's not that large for.
Oh, it's-
How many personnel are you gonna have there?
Well, that's what we need, she knows down R S V P, but we would like to see anybody that's not on duty that can show up, because it's-
Where are they gonna show it? I've been to their conference room, their rooms, how many's a hoe? All these people, 911 personnel, plus county gonna be there as well?
Probably this side's moving more.
Yeah, that's why I'm thinking it wouldn't be big enough to hold that many.
She says the places she hit, be big enough, according to her.
Yeah, you, you've had that video for us before.
Yeah, this ain't the video, this is up to date, and then this is a, we got an 18 wheeler, we come in with a flatbed. We got switches, refloater, they basically explain to you how stuff works, how the protection works. You know, with the wires down, how ready energy will eat you alive.
Did you, did you respond to this, uh, tree down on Burnt Mountain last Saturday week ago or Fri- uh?
I did on the phone. I was actually in the wood stock. So, but I was on the phone with Eric all the time, so.
I got video of it.
That was the second power outage, I think.
Yeah. I was actually, I got a call from Rodney and I said, go get the equipment, get it up, and they, I think they had a wait on the power companies with, uh-
Had to get the tree through one.
Yeah. So we still, we're going to hopefully go down and clean that hole. We got three trees that's narrowly out in the road, and we gotta go in and take those out. It's gonna be a difficult process because we've had three outages right there in the year. Was there something we were waiting on, nothing that you have a question?
Gym and, uh-
The gym?
Golf tournament.
She gave you the golf tournament, $9,000.
Yeah.
Uh, the gym, I was just approached by Carlton Wilson the same day, he asked me for the other things and offered me the road back. Uh, that he needed the gym back. And that was pretty much the agreement when they gave it to us, that they ever needed it, it was theirs. And, but, well, the neat part about this, John can kind of address this, maybe you've been to the meetings?
Well, I went to two meetings.
Okay, but, uh, what, address what the school was gonna do for us.
Basically what happened is Carlton said that they will provide the facilities if we provide the equipment. We have the ability as being independent, that we can go out and raise money and buy nets and buy mats and can buy stuff, where the school can't. So by them providing the facilities and us providing the material to do the sports with, we'll be able to work in partnership with-
Where do they take the mat from the gym? I wasn't taking out.
The wrestling mats went back to the old gym at the high school and, at the-
Pickens County High School.
Pickens High School. The cheerleading mats went to J M S. They didn't have anything like that at all, so their cheerleading people will be able to, uh-
Use J Y S A equipment?
Will they, will they be able to go into those, the volunteers go into those schools and teach and work with students? Because that's something we had difficulty before being approved.
That was prior before.
That's why it's great having Carlton Wilson as a school superintendent.
Well, the thing is, is like Carlton said, he said, we're just helping each other along. They can't buy this, but they can buy this, but we can buy this, they can't, and so working together is-
Best part about those facilities are air conditioners. This thing was killing.
Well, the, the gym was getting such for, repair the roof. We patched it every year, you know, the county at that time just wasn't gonna do it, so we did. And then, you know, the fans that tore up once before.
Did we put some money in the fans recently?
No, no, we did, we did, we did, we were about to, but, uh, we spent, Lisa's numbers for power and gas and everything else, we did the- For the gym.
Gym, uh, about $10,000 a year.
Yeah, so, uh, and, and a lot of repairs we did, so.
Well, legislature passed some legislation years ago that the boards of education couldn't rent gyms out to people like us without giant liability insurance.
Which we have to, we gotta provide that, which we've done that since day one.
That's why we were able to get into this agreement with them on that.
Which is terrible because most of the facilities in all the counties, all 159, are owned by the school system, and they lay fallow in the weekends when people want to go play basketball. Back in the day, we'd get a key and take off and play as young men out to play now, but-
Well, the thing is, is the only thing they ask is this school like after seven o'clock, so all the other activities in school is complete, which is fine anyhow because most of our parents live in Atlanta or work in Atlanta, and it takes them forever to, to get up here to get to the kids, so it's-
And most of, a lot of these children, their brother, older brothers and sisters are doing the other events.
Yeah.
But I never understood why the elementary schools wouldn't be able to do it at a reasonable time instead of, say, 5:30 or 6:00.
Well, this turned out to be a blessing, and it turned out we're gonna be able to help the schools and schools to be able to help us.
Wonderful.
With the racing program and the cheerleading and, but this, the football program alone, if, if you, if you have a football program, you need to try to win it.
And, and that's the thing too, Coach Parker has been working with us tremendously. He's, he's working with the coaches to run the same system he's running. Hopefully he'll be here by the time the kids get there, and we know we can start.
This, I gotta say, one last time, is J Y S A in 1994 was a, uh, a commissioner in one election. If you want to do, do the research and go find out which one that was. And he pretty much dismissed the recreation director, hired another recreation director. And I always said that recreation director rode by the Jasper Elementary and Tate Elementary and threw out applications at the window for fall football practice that year. No one signed up, so they did away with the program countywide. A few years later, Mr. Faust and Barry Cheshire and a few other people came and bothered me about starting a program. And I said, oh, man, I coached for 15 years, my elbow still hurts, I hate football. And, uh, don't want my kid to play and the concussion, definitely you're seeing on TV now about how bad football is. But they wouldn't shut up, and we started the program. And it was, I kept coached the first year, John and we all coached, we got started. And the thing about it, if you go back and look at the history of Jasper, Pickens County football, those years where there were no youth sports association suffered greatly, I mean, it was almost, they might have done away with the football program in Pickens County. They could, they, I think they had some open 10 seasons and this, that and the other. But when those kids went and finished their program with J Y S A, it started feeding the eighth grade programs and the high school programs. It started turning around, and I say that with validity because who is going to be 13 years old, never played football, and somebody says, I think, well, little Johnny, let's not go to the swimming pool today, let's go practice football down at the high school in the 110 degrees. They're not going to do it. If you train these kids, for lack of a better term, indoctrinate them, yep, brainwash them to do that crazy stuff, to go play that football, because little Johnny's not gonna do that at 13 years old. He wants to go hunting with his daddy and, and, and stay in that air conditioner. It's J Y S A, you go watch them right now, they're practicing over there, and it's not the coolest weather out there, right down there to practice football. They won't do it after you taught them 13 years not to do that. And they can say they built a heck of a football program down there, but without that youth program that they started so many years ago.
And you brought up the protection thing. We bought new helmets this year.
That's a big part of the expense of this thing.
Yeah, I mean, it, it missed a lot.
That helps, but I wanted to say that one final last time, now you turn that camera off, if I say something else. Thank you.